I'd like to call the Western Reserve Board Meeting to Order. May I have roll call?
Lisa Powell is absent, Mark Halls.
Present.
Richard Levins.
Present.
Melissa Potts.
Present.
Tracy Sen.
Present.
May we stand for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the treasurer's recommendations. It is recommended that the minutes of the October 12, 2017 regular meeting of the Board of Education be approved as mailed to each member in advance of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sen?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that the October 2017 financial reports be approved and the October listing of bills be approved as mailed to each member in advance of the meeting.
Second. Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sen?
Yes.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that the five-year forecast attachment number one be approved for fiscal years 2018 through 2022.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sen?
Yes.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes. Motion carried. It is recommended that the donation from the Canfield Fair be approved as follows. Hundred dollars for booth, two thousand four dollars for the band, one thousand dollars for cheerleading.
Two hundred.
Oh, I'm sorry, one hundred dollars for cheerleading. I said thousand dollars for cheerleading. I just gave them a boost.
I'm excited. Nine hundred of that is for Mark Halls.
It's a nice donation.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Sen?
Yes.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving to the superintendent's recommendations. It is recommended that Jennifer Lorenzi be approved as an unpaid volunteer ski club advisor for the 2017-2018 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Levins, you need to let Mr. Sen second, so. Mr. Sen?
Yes.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Motion carried. You need to jump right in there. It is recommended that Andrew Haig be approved as an unpaid volunteer ski club advisor for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved. Second. Mr. Levins?
So moved.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
You can't move. Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sen?
Yes.
He's a hot mess. He's a hot mess.
It is recommended that Amber Murphy be approved as an unpaid volunteer ski club advisor for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved.
Volunteers, huh?
Second.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sen?
Yes.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that Caroline McDermott be approved as an unpaid volunteer swim coach for the 2017-18 school year.
Do we still have people that swim?
We must.
How many?
We have one swimmer.
Okay. I was thinking it was Wyndham, I didn't realize anybody else.
We have one swimmer and it's Samantha Jarvis.
Oh.
He's our one swimmer.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sen?
Yes.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes. Motion carried. It is recommended to add Perry Marcannon and Mark Dorenzo to the classified substitute list.
So moved. Mr. Sen?
Yes.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
It is recommended to add Daniel Wyndham to the athletic worker list.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Sen?
Yes.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that Timothy Dell be granted a one-year facilities maintenance contract effective November 3, 2017, as per the salary schedule in effect.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sen?
Tim is our replacement for Ed. He has a degree from ETI in heating and cooling, electric plumbing.
Oh, nice.
All of our certificates. I tell you, since he started, actually Friday, he's fixed two mowers or vent tracks.
Seriously?
Yeah.
He's constantly moving.
He's really good. He's a 26-year-old guy who wants to be here his whole career.
Wow.
He's working well with Joe Satafarni and do the day turn. And he's been a great addition. Nothing, I had to show him how to flip the bulb and run bulb because the bulbs are, you know, they're going.
You know what would be amazing, too, is to get him involved, Jay Clark has that small engines program, you know, for.
Yeah, because he and Joe already fixed two tractors and vent tracks.
Get some of those kids, you know, involved in the maintenance.
So, Tim is a good addition. And Perry Marcannon and Mark Dorenzo are both substitute janitors. And a lot of that had to do with us, I think, moving our sub grade up a little bit, made it competitive.
Right.
And Perry, right now, is working five hours a night to help the gap between Joe being gone to day turn.
It is recommended to approve Shawn Gardner as an unpaid volunteer wrestling coach for the purpose of students participating as individuals in state tournaments for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved. Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ben, oh, Mr. Ben. Mr. Sen?
Yes.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
It is recommended to approve Michael Hyvner as an unpaid volunteer wrestling coach for the purpose of students participating in individual and state tournaments for 2017-18 school year.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sen?
Yes.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mike is going to be the head coach of the program, basically.
They've heard really good things.
Yeah, he's very good. He's a very good guy. Shawn is going to step back a little bit and help when Mike needs it. Shawn's going to work a little bit with the youth program. But we need to have two, we have two different matches at two different places, so.
Yeah.
Okay. It is recommended that the board approve the junior-senior class trip to Chicago on March 23 through the 25, 2018.
So moved. Second. Mr. Sen?
Yes.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that the board approve a junior high class trip to Gettysburg Hershey, PA on May 4 through the 6, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sen?
Yes.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
There's an addendum?
Yeah, right there.
All right, it is recommended that Jeffrey Brogan be hired as the fifth and sixth grade basketball coach for the 2017-18 school year as per the salary schedule in effect.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sen?
Motion carried. It is recommended that Charles Riccardi be approved as an unpaid volunteer basketball coach for 2017-18 school year.
So moved. Second. Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sen?
Yes.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that William Classic III be approved as an unpaid volunteer basketball coach for 2017-18 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sen?
Yes.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes. Motion carried. It is recommended that Joy Eichert be approved as an unpaid volunteer basketball coach for 2017-18 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sen?
Yes.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Motion carried.
These are all one of the fourth, fifth grade, fourth, fifth, sixth grade program people, volunteers. And Jeff is going to be the heading on the program.
Okay. It is recommended that the board revise the rate of pay for certified substitute teachers to $75 per day.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Sen?
Yes.
Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
After doing research countywide with all of our superintendents in tri-county area, 65 are at the bottom. It ranges all the way to 125, 130, 150.
I don't think any of them do this.
The majority of them are 85, 75. And since we're not part of Rachel Wicksley, which is a hiring group to a lot of the news, Rachel Wicksley would charge us 90, $100 per sub, but we'd still only pay the sub 75, so this way we get our own. They charge a fee.
To get them, to call them, to put it in order where our guys do that.
But this way our principal still comes up.
Go to the building principals report.
In the middle school, high school, we have just really a busy time in the school year. You have the end of the grading period that's taking place right now, Thanksgiving, Christmas activities, a number of breaks, deadlines that we have to hit, so it's really just kind of a hectic time. We have the school drum tonight, so that's always kind of an enjoyable thing, to go and watch and see kids just in a different setting, see personalities come out, so that's always kind of an enjoyable thing. That's been worked tonight, and it's going to work Saturday evening. We saw a preview of it yesterday in school. The kids are going to be really well with it. One of the big pushes that we made, and I talked about it earlier in the year, was PBIS, Positive Behavior Advantage System. Our major push was for attendance, really making it a positive environment and getting kids to come to school. And we've really seen some positive benefits from our effort. Our middle school students have done a tremendous job, six, seven, and eight, really, really having a great student. Attendance has been tremendous, and the high school as well. They've kind of gone into the process and attendance has improved, so, you know, I told you we were going to make an emphasis, and the kids have responded to that, and that's always great to see. Parent-teacher conferences are coming up next week, so we'd like to see a really good turnout with that, and I expect that we will. We have a, Mr. McGlin may give more detail on it, but I just want to touch on it. We have an early dismissal, a 21st, two-hour early release, and one of the things that we're going to go over is like a safety training with our teachers, and this will be probably about the second or third activity that we've had with that. You know, all of the news, all over the country, we see different things, world events that take place, and so we've made an emphasis and a real effort to go over safety protocols with our teachers, practice our evacuation rules, and I don't want to say make it routine, but maybe the situation where the kids and teachers are knowledgeable of what they're supposed to do in situations, so.
I did have the Alice training there.
We've done a combination of Alice and also active shooter training here.
Okay.
We haven't done the full Alice yet.
Right.
That's something. Next week we're doing the active shooter again with the pellets.
Great.
And we're working with Scott Wiemer to look at, and the sheriff's department on the total Alice training.
And I think it's just one of those things that unfortunately we have to make it part of the routine, part of our same plan, which is sad to say. But one neat thing was we had Southern Local came up for a visit, their leadership council, which was a group of about 11 students, kind of came up and shadowed some of our student student grades to kind of get a view of culture, and just kind of like a little student exchange situation. So on the 29th, we're going to take a group of our student council students to go down and to visit there. So, you know, it's just always good to get out and see what else is out there and to appreciate what you do have, you know, when they come back, so. That's pretty much the things that are going on right here during the holiday season and leading up to Christmas.
Okay.
Debbie is at a reading improvement, mainly with third-grade parents, so she was going to try and get them, but they've already improved plans with the parents.
Okay. All right, Tower.
I don't have anything to report.
There's nothing to report?
No.
Okay. Oopsies, not here.
It's always good.
PTO?
It's good.
No. I think they're setting up, they're going to do cookies.
Yeah, they're going to do cookies.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Jeff?
Let's check my phone to see where we're on the blitz voting, to see if we're still leading for the game of the year. We've done a game, we were leading on the blitz in the game of the year, so that's pretty exciting. We were ahead today, so I think today is March 5.
It's like a 1% or something?
Yeah, we're winning by 1%. It's pretty incredible.
It is amazing, though, how much we win with a small population, because who did we beat? Like, we beat, like, Poland and somebody for player of the week, and as many people as they have, you think.
Little tiny school, so that's pretty incredible.
Yeah, I mean, everybody does.
It's really a neat thing.
It's our community.
Another big thing this week, Kate Hill has signed his letter of intent for his full ride scholarship for Tiffin to play basketball at Division II, full ride scholarship, so another great thing for our school, our school district, and really incredible for him and his family, so we're really proud of him and happy for him and his family. Winter sports photo day is November 14, which is next Tuesday, so we're going to have all middle school, we're going to do the youth basketball, or fifth and sixth grade basketball as well that day. Girls varsity basketball will open up their season November 27 at East Palestine. Boys varsity basketball will open up December 1, home here against Columbia. Middle school basketball will open up December 4. The fall sports banquet will be December 3. I believe it's them from MacArthur Hart up to Austintown, whichever one you're invited to, you're all more than welcome to go, just let us know if you're planning on attending. I know boosters and invitations and stuff. I didn't have any of those. I'll get, I think I have the email thread that has everybody on it, so.
I already have them.
I scanned it, I'll send it all to you, and if you want to tell me to reply back to it, you'll have the information. Just let me know, and I'll pass that along to the Busher Club. The fifth and sixth grade basketball weekends this year are Saturday, December 2, and December 9, which are all-day events here. At the school they use all three gyms, which are great for the community, those are the days they host here. The boys have the one weekend, the girls have the other. Very busy days here, but our kids and our basketball programs have great success with that, and really enjoy having everybody here playing great days for them. Did something really great with our student athletes here, I think it was YU here, Monday? Monday, worked with Ms. Matos. On Monday we brought in a couple guys from YU, and then JJC, and they spoke to all of our, I think it was all of our student athletes, and.
Men.
All the men, football, basketball, student athletes in the player room, jump stretch room, on just overcoming adversity and accountability after the football game. Went really well. It's going to be something that we're going to kind of continue through the winter sports season, spring season, hopefully something that we can build on throughout the year, that partnership with YU football team, with the JJC, and so we would kind of go on and do some different things, kind of build character, stuff like that, so, create a partnership to really continue that, so.
We're opening up a lot of this to our volunteers, to our coaches in all sports, and kids in all sports, to bring them in. And Jeff just came up with a, went to a meeting Monday, and was dealing with difficult people. And, I know, and, they're difficult people, and out of that came another whole set of, we could do monthly professional development that is online, available to all of our coaches and our kids. And then we're going to bring some speakers in as we go throughout the year. Allison Jeff are working on bringing FCA and another group in to talk to all the kids about different topics, so. We're trying to educate them as much as we can and get some things rolling for them as far as decision-making, and here's the opportunities out there, what's available to you, how do you do it? One of the things Danielle has talked about is taking all the kids, the juniors and seniors, through the fascinator process, to show them how do you apply for financial aid.
Right.
Just to go through it all with them.
That's complicated.
And the parents, for the parents, I would say.
Yeah, absolutely.
To show them the process, so, try to educate them in many different ways.
We need to get that rule in, so we got sophomore.
Yeah, yeah, you know, next year. You know, and there's some universities, for example, Ohio State just opened up another grant opportunity where any students who qualify for financial aid Pell Grant, they will match a Pell Grant. So, with, let's take a kid who may have got $15,000 or $12,000 for his grant, they'll now match the 12, and they'll have to pay for it, it'll be room and board, which is minimal. So, it's a nice opportunity where their goal is to get kids out of college debt-free. So, they put about $150 million into it, they're going to affect, next year's entire freshman class will all have some sort of money to reduce their costs. So, and I think a lot more universities are starting to pick up on that. YU's just got that $100 million grant to help them with some of those funds, so.
Jeff, was that it?
Yeah.
Was that it, were you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Before we go to the superintendent's comments, we have a community concern. Mr. Cummings, would you like to?
So my reason for being here tonight is I had an issue against him last year concerning my son and a basketball coach. I don't know if it's better for me to read this, because I did, and you'd want to read that from the back to the front. I don't know if any of you were aware of my son's ground during practice. Does that sound familiar to anybody here? Would you like me to read this, or paraphrase it, or?
Now did something else come up, or it's just weird that this happened last December?
What?
Last December situation, we did, Jeff, maybe you want to rest of it. We did deal with the coach, it was a month. I believe the coach stepped down.
Yeah.
Last year.
He didn't, but he was still coaching that year. You guys let him continue to go to games, which I.
We investigated the situation, went through it all. I know Deputy Gensler talked to Mr. Cummings, I talked with Mr. Cummings. There are some things we put in this year for our coaches that were taking them through professional development, to get them to understand, you know, just how to organize a practice, how to run a practice, what to do, so there's not that downtime in practices. And also how to deal with students. That's why Jeff went to, how to deal with difficult people, to try and educate people, our staff more often. So we've done a lot of things from last year. The gentleman in question is not back from last year. And I believe Patsy and Jeff took a lot, took pretty good care of that, along with Joe Gensler with the situation.
But you never did get back to me, like you said you would.
I never what?
You never got back to me. But maybe I can just read this. On Wednesday, 12/14/16, Tyler Cummings was grabbed and pushed during basketball practice by Coach Baird. I called Coach Del Torio on Friday, 12/16, after hearing about the incident, I left a message. I called Coach Del Torio again on Tuesday, 12/20, left a message. On the same day, I called and spoke with Superintendent McGlin. He stated that he would get back to me. On Wednesday, 12/21, Coach Del Torio called and we spoke of the incident. He stated that he had talked to Coach Baird, and that Coach Baird admitted to grabbing and pushing Tyler during practice. Coach Del Torio was very apologetic and suggested that he, Coach Baird, and myself compete to talk about the incident. I'm not interested in meeting with Coach Baird. What I do expect is for West Reserve Schools to produce a full report of this incident, which I don't think that was done, and follow any and all procedures relating to this type of incident, including contacting local state authorities, because this may be classified as an assault. Did push him to the ground. I believe it to be the duty of West Reserve Schools to pursue any and all charges against Coach Baird regarding this incident, as Tyler was under the school's care. I do not want this incident overlooked or swept under the rug.
And I did get back to you after Mr. Del Torio talked to you, and we discussed the things we were going to do.
Well, you got back to me pretty email, you never called me, and this is your, this is your email to me. I assure you that we will not just sweep this under the rug. It is my intent to sit down with our athletic director, Jeff Martin, Coach Del Torio, our SRO deputy, Joe Gensler, and Mrs. Freely to sort through this whole situation. If possible, based on availability, I would like to try to meet with this group this week. Once we review this incident, we will determine what direction we'll take to correct this situation from ever occurring in the future. We will investigate and gather, get all the information gathered, and talk to those involved in this matter, including Coach Baird and Tyler. I will contact you as soon as I can set up everything and have further information. Over a month went by, and I emailed Doug. For your last email, you stated that you would contact me. Can you please update me on what has transpired? Thank you. Doug wrote back, we've put in place a number of changes for next year on how we select coaches, as well as checking to see if they have any playing or coaching experience prior to the selection process. We are also going to bring in professional development for those coaches and parents that become involved. One of the programs will be on how to work with younger players and how to better maximize practice times, so kids are not standing around with nothing to do. The kids are not standing around with nothing to do. We are also going to utilize online programs from NFHSlearn.com to help with modeling behavior for coaches. Hopefully, these programs will provide coaches and parents with productive professional development." After I heard that, I'm like, you know what? Maybe there's going to be something positive that comes out of this. And we won't run into this next year. So a year goes by, basketball season started. It caught me by surprise. Maybe I should step on things better. But then my last email is basically, I don't see that anything has happened. If you can explain to me, you know, what process happened to select coaches? What professional development did you bring in? What programs were implemented? I really don't think anything has happened. And...
I think they're Jake Carson. I believe they are.
I guess my problem is, I don't think anything was done with this. I think it probably was an assault. I never heard back from Doug. I just emailed this to him, I haven't heard back from him. I think it was definitely swept under the rug, as it is now. I'm a little frustrated with this season. Last season, they had two teams, which was great. It was awesome. This season, they had 14 kids and only one team. They have one coach that is also coaching another team. Or a guy, I think he has three kids. He probably doesn't have time to coach one team. He's coaching two teams. It's been four weeks. They cancel the practice every week. I think they practiced three to four times before their first game. They got smashed. So what, what has happened? Did anybody reach out to try to get coaches? I don't think anything was done with this, and that's why I'm coming to the board.
I think this is two different situations, first of all. The previous situation, I think, was addressed. The coach was sandaled. He's no longer with us. You know, and we did put in a training process, you know, and a new development. So I think it's two separate situations. Last year's situation, the Baird...
Tell me what training process?
We're working with the online training. We're setting up the meetings. We're, you know, working on behaviors. And it's hard...
Who's doing that?
And it's hard...
I'm sorry, but I'm not believing it.
No, and listen, I have a fourth grader too. I get it, but do you know how much time they put in and how much money they make, the coaches, the coaches these youngs? And I'm not saying that's an excuse, but it's hard to find coaches that want to devote that much time for them. If you boil it down by what they make hourly, what is it?
Volunteers.
Three, four dollars an hour. Like, you know, the assistants don't make anything, you know? But I mean, even the small stipend, the ones that actually get paid, they don't make much money. So it's hard to, you know, get top-notch people, especially for the younger grades. As a matter of fact, we started the fourth grade team just, what, two years ago?
Yeah.
You know, so we're like trying to add on more teams to get the kids, you know, to learn earlier on, but, you know, this is all an expense the schools taking on, because a lot of the kids were like going to Salem Community Center and stuff and doing those teams. But I mean, I mean, do you have any coaching experience? We're always looking for good coaches. I know my kids all play sports, and I don't have the talent, and I honestly wouldn't have the patience or wanted to devote the time that they do for the, you know, the small amount of money. I, I mean, some are better than others, but it is hard, 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 especially for that younger grade, because, you know, we can't afford to pay them what they deserve, you know, for the amount of time, you know, even if they're practicing one, two nights a week for two hours. I mean, that's, you add that up over the time, and then the game times. I mean, that's a lot of hours.
My point, there is two issues here, but the first issue, nothing was ever really done.
You don't think when he was, he was removed from his position and he's not...
He wasn't removed from his position. They let him coach the rest of the year. He didn't want to be there.
First of all, I'm not going to argue with you on the situation. We did take steps. We had the investigation with Deputy Gensler. He went through everything, walked through everything. We brought all the coaches in. We looked at changing things. We brought Baird in and went through stuff with him. There were a lot of things we did that no, you don't see because we do them behind the scenes, because as Missy said, most of these people don't want to coach. We could barely get coaches for this year. And it's just because of the time.
But how did you try though? I mean, did you put an ad in?
They recruit with... No, we don't put ads in for them.
That's probably why you're not getting any coaches. I mean, did you hang anything up? Did you ask local churches, anything like that? I mean, there's got to be people out there.
Of course.
To coach you, you have to be, so you have to have background. You have to, you're spending a couple hundred dollars.
You have to be a coach.
To be a volunteer.
That's required by law.
And as far as, and as far as anything like charges, I mean, that would have to come from you, as the parent of the child that was assaulted. You know what I mean? We couldn't take action on him.
I don't think so, because the school was responsible for the child that night.
But there was an investigation.
Yeah, and if you wanted it further...
Everything in his building is videotaped.
It wasn't on tape.
Everything in his building is videotaped.
It wasn't on tape.
Did it happen in your gym?
Yes.
To your team.
Okay.
Which gym was that?
I'll say for the third time, there was nothing on the tape.
I know Deputy Gensler...
There was a witness.
If it was or was not taped, like even, we couldn't pursue a charge because you would have to, as the child's guardian. Like, we couldn't, like, if Jeff came up and punched me right now, you couldn't press charges against him. You know what I mean? I would have to, you know what I mean? I'm the one that was injured. I would have to initiate that.
And on that line, Deputy Gensler did talk with you.
Correct.
Yes, he did call.
And he wanted you to come in and meet.
No, that wasn't, he did not say, "I want you to come in and meet."
Okay. And through his investigation, he determined there was no assault. And I think he told you that.
No, he did not.
Which is why he didn't pursue it.
He did not say that. He never said that.
Okay.
He said he looked at the tapes, and where they were, the cameras, and he catch them at that angle.
There were tapes or there weren't tapes?
The tapes of, the videotapes of that night. He said he looked at them in the gym, and somehow they didn't catch where they were.
Which could be a biome, could be a linesman.
And there was, there was a witness of another coach that saw the whole thing. Her name was Hines.
And I believe Mr., I could tell you, Mr. Morgan, Mr. Daltorio sat down with all those folks, and then they sat down with me, and we went through all that. And that's why we've done the professional development, so we don't get in situations where...
I mean, definitely, that's a very serious situation.
You said, "Okay, I will contact you as soon as I can set up and have further information." You just never contacted me.
But he emailed you after that. He didn't say he would call you by phone. He emailed you.
No, he didn't email me. I emailed him a month later, because I'm saying nothing, nothing was done.
But in that process, you had talked with Mr. Daltorio a number of times, about what we had done.
A number of times, I think once or twice.
Okay, and I know he discussed with you what happened and what took place and what the outcome was, so...
No, it never was, it wasn't followed through. I don't, I don't believe it was ever followed through.
And did your, did your son continue playing then, if the coach was still there?
Yes, my son continued playing.
Okay, and the coach stayed through the season then?
Yes.
Okay.
What would you like to see happen in this situation?
I was hoping it would have been a better program this year. Right now, I guess that coach needs help. He's coaching two teams, and he probably doesn't have time to coach one. So right now, get him some help to coach the team. When he can't be at practice, there's no practice, and it's canceled. He didn't even make the first game. I'm not saying, he seems like a good guy. He seems dedicated.
He was on vacation. There was a vacation, and he was, he was given a vacation.
Yeah. Well, did we, did we hire somebody here today to help them? No? Did you, like, only the one person's going, fifth and sixth, or...
Juice Rinses.
Oh.
Juice Rinses.
Oh, okay, so...
He's seven, eight, two, right? He's only eight. Yeah. I don't think much of him.
Done.
And we had, we had a hard time convincing a couple of the guys to coach us time, because the time you pay for it, and they're volunteering it, and the time just doesn't equal out. So if you wanted a coach, you certainly would want him, because we don't have anyone. You know, from that standpoint. You know, you just have to do the BCI, FPN, and everything else to be part of it.
And we do have a hard time finding a coach, because we are picky. You know, we don't just want, we don't want to put an ad in Youngstown Vindicator and have, you know, some people that are, you know, that just are looking for money, that aren't educators.
I didn't, I didn't know if you pay it or not, and that's beside the point.
Most of them are volunteers.
There's two issues here. Like I said, the one, and I believe I stated it clearly, this was overlooked. It was overlooked and swept under the rug.
It wasn't swept under the rug.
Nobody, nobody got back to it. But the second issue is, this year, I thought things would be better. I thought maybe, you know what, things are going to change. This, you know, a negative could turn into a positive, and I think not. And that's...
Well, the one positive is, we didn't, we didn't bring that coach back. I mean, that's for...
He didn't want, he didn't want me to.
That's good, that's a good thing. We, you know, we only want, no, we want...
The one thing is, you want to, there was a push for two teams. And unfortunately, with 14 kids, it's very difficult to have two teams, because you work the split on seven and seven.
Kind of like right at the break, yeah.
If a kid doesn't show up, you're down six.
I disagree, because it's very difficult to develop a program. And, and the point is, to get them out there, playing with 14 kids, they don't even play one-third of the game each. That's if they're fairly close.
But on the flip side, there are young kids that miss a lot, too. And so like he said, if you got seven on there, and they get sick, and they have vacation, and they, you know what I mean? They have family functions, so... I have a fourth, I have a fourth grader that plays on the team right below you. So we had two that didn't come last week, and same thing.
There are no two teams.
Oh, there's another team?
If there were two teams, if there were two teams, you would have had that problem.
Are you allowed to do that, though? If they're on separate teams? I don't know if you're allowed to have them. This league seems pretty tight.
It's just about if.
Absolutely, and that's the thing.
Not ever been made or put into these, these things. That's it.
Well, I... Do we respond?
I don't, I'm not real sure. We can talk?
I mean, I'm sure...
Why would we ask that question?
I'm sure we're open for more coaches, if you know of anyone. I'm sure that we're not done, you know, I know that it's underway, but if, you know, I'm sure that we're still on the search if we have any...
As I said, if you're interested, we'll get you the information of what you have to do, because we're short.
I think you could bond to superintendent's comments.
Okay. All right, well, we thank you. And we'll move on to superintendent's comments.
Several things. One, Chris Jaeger was nominated for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. She doesn't teach the math in this area, but she does teach the STEM and the science. She's one of the, she'll be one of the finalists in the program. She has to go through and put her, her resume in for them, and then it'll be chosen later in the year. I nominated her basically because of some of the things she's doing in sixth grade. And it was only month six. She couldn't go into the eighth grade, where we're doing some STEM stuff now, too. And you couldn't do that, so that's a big kudos for her. I gave you something from Larry Akers, the district regional gentleman for the Ohio High School Athletic Association. So many times, so many things get lost in the process of what our kids do and how good they are. And his highlight was basically, our community, our fan base, as well as the patriotism that our kids show and our coaches show, and honoring our veterans. And he said he doesn't see that everywhere. He's going to recommend our school for an award through the Ohio High School Athletic Association. And the Ohio School Board Association is going to highlight the team in the future, one of their newspapers they send out. And he has also been nominated by the VFW as the Teacher of the Year throughout the country for teaching patriotism and teaching kids the right way to handle certain situations. When you, when you look at what's going on today in the NFL and all around, it's crazy. You know, I think we've lost track of what's really important, and that's people's lives and what they sacrifice. A lot of our overpaid guys are really forgetting that, from that standpoint. Those are, those are two positive things. The tenth period item I gave you is just going through and discussing a little bit about charter schools. And that kind of goes along with the school bus paper. I get this every day. Oh, 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 yeah, it's a Ohio Education and Questions Program. It just tells you where charter schools are at right now. Currently, if you look at the amount of money in '17, '18, that's going to charter schools from local schools, $883 million from state government to charter schools. 99% of those charter schools are non-performance schools. They're low performing. They're getting an average of $8,000 a pupil. We get 56,000, 59.
60.
60, 6,000.
6,000 per.
That's, and remember, the whole funding process is goofy, because open enrollment, we get six.
Right.
For our local kids, we get 19, right? We get 1,900 for our resident kids.
And they get 8,000.
Yeah, they're getting 8,000 per pupil, whether they're in the seat or not. And that's what the big lawsuit with ECon is, they have to pay back $60 million. Because that gives you an idea of where...
Because they're basically all technically open enrollment to a charter school.
Yeah. Yeah. That gives you an idea of where a lot of the state funding is going over the years. And it's a big push nationally with Betsy DeVos on going to private schools, charter schools. So I wanted to give you just, until you see the numbers, you don't realize how much money public education is losing. But $883 million would be about a made and a half more dollars to every school district in the state, which would be nuts, instead of what was a $21.
You'd get rid of all those levies.
Yeah, yeah. You know, if you equate it all, and that goes back to the 90s with Duroff, unequal funding and from district to district, and they've not addressed that at all, you know, from that standpoint. The other thing I gave you is from Venus in Britain. This is the SB 216. This is being fast-tracked through the Ohio House and Senate. It is primarily set up, if you remember last year, all the superpens kind of got together a little bit statewide, met in Columbus, and we went through some things. This, a lot of this is from those meetings. Some's good, some's bad, because you're trying to meet a lot of people's needs. But SB 216 is called the Education Deregulation Bill. It basically is going to change how state assessments, how teacher evaluation, how you take assessments, can you do online, can you do only, like currently, can we do computer? A lot of the little kids are ready for that, so...
I don't think it's necessarily the computer, it's the content that they're shoving at them. I know having a fourth grader, I mean, they're factory.
Oh, yes.
Like, what they're doing, Jake was doing a middle, like, my high schooler was doing a middle school. Like, and he brings home his homework, and I'm like, seriously?
Yeah, and you're living firsthand, seeing what you're going through. And I gave you this, just so you could, could look a little bit about, and look through it. Next month, what the county is asking each district is to pass a resolution supporting this at Matt Hoffman. That's why I wanted to give it to you a month ahead, so you can look at it. There's some things in there that are really good, there's some things that are not, which are really put in, but a lot of the different things are very good, going back to the standards-based evaluations and getting away from some of the things. I don't know if you saw in Youngstown, the big article about shared attribution.
Yeah.
This doesn't weigh with shared attribution. There is no shared attribution. It's, shared attribution is, Mark is responsible for what I do in my class in sixth grade. He's responsible 12th grade for what my kids do. So you're sharing it all the way. This doesn't weigh with that, and it makes it more on what each individual classroom is actually doing and what the teachers are actually achieving, so, you know, you'll, like I said, this is due to be voted on in January, and they've got enough steam, it should pass.
And I think the biggest thing is to get something in regular language for our parents, you know, what they need to do. You know, if we need to write letters, you know, get something that's kind of bullet points and what they need to do, call, write, you know, and what they're advocating for. Because that's the thing, they put this stuff out, and it kind of goes over everybody's head. And then they're like, well, you didn't advocate. Well, just hearing states all too, you know what I mean? But if they're realizing what's...
In December, I'm going to try and give the folks a little bit of background on this and get an idea.
Right.
You know, even the truancy law is going to change here. And Dallas and Jeff could tell you how much time they're spending on the new truancy policy and how we're trying to put all this together, and then it's going to change. You know, so there's so many things with ODE. I still think they're chasing their tail, because they don't know.
Is it just changing staff, or are they that bipolar? You know what I mean? Is it somebody new comes in and changes everything, or is it...
Mandates from Columbus are easy, yeah.
They do have a lot of turnover.
Yeah.
And is it somebody new coming in and being like, well, this is a good idea, and then, no, we're not doing that anymore?
Those are some things I wanted to bring up to you, from that standpoint.
It's just so hard, and why they're trying to get stuff together, the kids are just getting, you know, bombarded. They really are. These young kids have been bombarded with this work. It's over their head. It's way over their heads and they're feeling like they're not smart enough because, you